Okay, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Springfield City Council General Government Committee. My name is Springfield City Councilor Victor D'Avio, and convenience is subcommittee in order. The time is now twelve oh three, and today we're joined here in the chair by Vice Councilor Oriental Walsh. Good afternoon, Councilor Walsh, thank you for joining us. Also, Councilor Allen, thank you for joining us. And remotely, we have Councilor Brian Santinello. We also have here in the chambers, we have a couple of stellar community activists. We have for the Forest Park Association, Mr. Harry Seymour, thank you for joining us.
Hello.
We also have for the Forest Park Association, Deb Shea, thank you. And for the Forest Park Association, Malloy.
Who?
Malloy, I was called Malloy. Remotely, we are joined by DPW Director Chris Ignoy, and we are also joined by Amy Henderson from EverSource, who I will turn over the floor shortly. And may I know, who is the person named Moving One?
That's Michael, that's the, I mentioned that there's a citizen.
Oh, Michael.
Just attending Mike on that alley, I believe it was his name.
Good afternoon, Michael, thank you for joining us, Michael.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Very well, so today on the agenda, the purpose of today's meeting is to talk about three items. One, the lack of street lighters in the Forest Park neighborhood. The amount of crews dedicated to replace and burn out streetlights. And the schedule to replace burnout streetlights. We do know that we are having some troubles throughout the city with the streetlights, particularly in Forest Park. We, it has become an issue, we'll be getting a lot of phone calls, not only Forest Park, but throughout the city. And so, I do have a array of plethora of questions for you, Amy. And I'm sure you're gonna give us some sort of overview on the streetlights. But let me at least go straight to the point, Amy, for the capacity of what you're able to speak of. In 2019, it was established that this EverSource was going to replace roughly about fifteen percent of the lights into, I believe it was LED lights, if I'm not mistaken. They were gonna keep up with the maintenance, and I believe it was LED lights, for five years until they reached the entire city. Where are we on that right now?
So I'm happy to report that we're actually seventy percent complete with that. We just completed year three of the five-year plan. And so that's been going very well.
Okay, and so, so we should have been done by now, correct?
It was a five...
Yeah, we should be wrapping up by now then, because it's five years' plan, you started what, you started in 2019?
No, it started in 2023, January of 2023.
Yeah, that started in January twen- thanks, Chris, I was just pulling up my notes, that started in January 2023.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just completed the third year, so we're just over seventy percent done with the conversions.
Would you be able to speak us to what part of the city, geographically speaking, is to be done?
I don't have that information on me, counselor, but I will get it and get it and get it to you. I know that we are working through the city by zip code, so I will, I just don't have that information on me, and I'll, but I'll get it to you.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Counselor, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
So Amy, what was, this is Tim Allen, what was the, you know, what was the purpose of the project? Was to do conversions of what?
So we convert, we are converting streetlights to LED, and that was a, in partnership with the city.
And were they gonna be all streetlights?
So all eligible streetlights, so not all the streetlights can be converted to LEDs, but those that can be converted are on that list. So the decorative lights typically cannot be converted to LED.
And, and just for the counselors, the total number of streetlights in the city through EverSource is about fourteen thousand five hundred of them, and they were looking to do about three thousand-ish a year. So with seventy percent done, we're probably a year ahead of schedule on those. And anytime, as they've been working through the city geographically, anytime that a light needed to be replaced, didn't matter where it was in the city, has been replaced with an LED. So rather than putting in a, you know, a high-pressure sodium somewhere along the way just to fix it, they've actually been swapping out the LEDs as they've been doing repairs.
Okay.
So you will see, like, my neighborhood now, it's like I got six lights on my street, two of them are LEDs, because they needed to be fixed, and they'll be coming through and replacing the, the rest within the next year or so.
Thank you, Chris. So Chris, the, the lights that we have now that are not LED, are those high-pressure sodium?
Those are basically all the decorative lights. The decorative lights in the city cannot be replaced with LEDs, because LEDs are not bulbs, they are, they are the entire fixture, the entire ballast system that goes along with it. So those lights don't have anything in there that can be retrofitted to LEDs.
No, no, I understand, I want to talk about the light poles that have not been changed over to LED as of yet. What kind of light do we have? Are those high-pressure?
Yeah, those are whatever is out there, the different style that's been put out there over the years. You know, depending upon a neighborhood, some of them are, you know, they're all some type, and Amy will know this better than I, some type of high-pressure sodium of different, different levels and different eras that are still out there that are being replaced.
I understand, I understand.
And the, the lights that are being replaced, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, it is the entire fixture, it is not just the bulb, so it's a, it's a complete fixture and arm replacement on the existing poles.
That's, that's correct.
Now, let me ask you this question before I turn it over to, to my colleagues, to the, to the floor. So I guess it's good news that we have done seventy percent of the replacement to LEDs. And as you said, Chris, it appears that we are a year ahead of schedule, which is good news. Now, in terms of replacing the lights itself, because this is a problem. I know in Forest Park, I counted at least on some streets, some, some, you're having this case, excuse me, at least twelve lights that are out, and I know there are some decorative lights, most of them, but also throughout the neighborhood, I do have regular light poles that are out. Now, I really understand, I fully get it, that we have spoken before, that the resident needs to go out, they need to look at this number, the only God knows where it is, because half of the time they're missing, and I know I brought this up before, or they're too high, they're not easily accessible. People are supposed to call it in, 311, or to you directly, and it's gonna be replaced. We have a waiting time of at least six months to get those lights changed. And that's personally, and Amy, I'm just very grateful to hear, that's ludicrous. So let me ask you this, Amy, to the capacity of your ability to speak. Walk me through EverSource's plan for the upkeep and replacement for the maintenance of the lights. Aside from people calling it in, how would you guys proactively ensure that that light does not go out? Or that is maintained properly?
Yeah, so counselor, so we really, we really are dependent on a partnership with the community to report when there's a streetlight dim, flickering, out. Unfortunately, there's not a technology that alerts us to that. When we have crews out driving around at night, you know, they will take note if there's streetlights out, and, and we make note of that. As far as sort of the maintenance of, or where, where we were and where, where we were and where we are today, we've made pretty significant progress in the last year with getting to those we, tickets of streetlights that are out. So a year ago, you know, we, we had some work to do, and we heard the city, and we brought in extra, or a contractor who worked specifically on some of the backlog. And in the last year, we've been really able to cut that significantly down. You know, from, as you said, lights taking months to get to, and having a pretty significant backlog to today. I can, I'm happy to say that we have, I think roughly, in our system, and this only is in our system, which means it's been reported to us. So again, we don't know if it's not reported, we, we have about sixty-eight out of the fourteen thousand two hundred-plus lights in the city that we are aware of being out. And on our average response time to repair those now is about thirty days. And that's our, that's the standard, and we've been, we've been meeting that since we brought in the contractor and really cleared out that backlog. So we believe that over the last year, we've made significant progress. And we, we do encourage people to continue to report any streetlight issues. And they don't need to use the number on the pole. If they just have a street address closest to the pole, that actually is really good for our crews as well, sometimes even better. So if, you know, if you're driving by and you notice one out, and you notice you're at Thirty Main Street, you just need to take note of that address, and that's what can be either reported through the city's 311 system, or you can even go on our website and report it yourself. And if you report it yourself, you'll actually get updates, emails of the progress of how that's working its way through our system.
Right, Amy, and I, and I thank you for that, and I have to respectfully push back, Amy. There's a disconnect here somewhere, because I have people telling me it's taken them six months, four, six months to get this done. And so, but let me, with this, ask you, we have somebody else that's joining us here. Excuse me a second, Amy. So question for you. It is my understanding in the, and I realize you probably were not in charge of this back then. But do you guys do, I believe what is called coupling changes like light maintenance or change?
I'm not sure what you might be referring to.
Okay, let me try this way.
Yeah.
Was the Irish lifespan of any LED light in the city? The Irish lifespan?
That, that one has me, I'll have to check in with our operations group on that to, to find out what the, the expected life span is of an LED light, and I can try to get that back to you.
So let me, let me try it this way, Amy, and I, I do thank you for your try, but I, I am doing some serious pushback here, because this is, this is a thing issue. So my understanding is that, and anybody, can't speak to this in a second, but my understanding is that if a light bulb had, say for example, a four-year lifespan, so I put it on today, and I thought that light is gonna go out in four years, on average. My understanding is that, I think it was Western Mass Electric, or before that, that they will have guys, they will have the, the line workers, the ones that actually work with the high electricity, then they had the, 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 the name, which I'm naming is Casey right now. And they will go in, and they will have a crew of two. And those guys, that's all they did, they will start, they will go up on the ladder, the basket, they will go up a ladder, they will inspect the light, they will take the light bulb, chill out, they will clean it, they will taste it, test it, make sure it was good. If it was no good, they will place it on the spot. If it was good, then they will move on to the next. By the time they came around back to the same spot that they started on, it would have been roughly about four years or so. And so the result was, from what I'm being told back then, that we did not have the problems that we have now. If I understand correctly what you're telling me, what you guys are doing now is relying on the public to tell you when the light is out, correct?
Yeah, so I think what you're referring to, when you're talking about that, is it was called, I think, the Lamp Ranger Program, and that hasn't been, that was, as you said, with Western Mass Electric, I, I mean, I think we're, that program expired a couple decades ago. But we, we do rely on the public partnership of helping us identify any lights. I, I don't have a lot of information about
Who does?
A program that we're looking at, which there would be a photocell on the light fixture that would let us know that there was an issue with the light. I'm not sure where that program is, but I can gather some information about that to find out more about where we are on that program and, and how it will be.
So Amy, the last meeting that I was here, I forgot the name, the guy from EverSource, who tried his best, just like you, Amy. And he told us that we had one crew only for the maintenance of the lights in the city of Springfield. He also told us that they were gonna bring a second crew from Connecticut to help us out. So my question to you, this is roughly about a year ago. How many crews do we have dedicated right now out there on the streets, working on the streetlights, maintenance and upkeep in the city of Springfield?
So the, the contractors that you're referring to, so I spoke about those a little earlier, we actually had four, over the last year, we had four dedicated crews, and since we've cleared the larger backlog, we are to two dedicated crews. And then we also have, you know, our regular overhead underground RSO groups that are out doing, you know, their regular work and getting assigned.
Okay. And now, are those two crews right now, are they only for the city of Springfield, or are they shared throughout the region?
So it's, those crews are shared for our Springfield territory. So we have several other communities that we service out of the Springfield Area Work Center, like Agawam, West Springfield, Southway.
Amy, I'm gonna, in a second, I'm gonna turn it over to the counselors, I'm to the floor, but I, I am not gonna hide my displeasure. I am not going to hide my annoyance, annoyance with this, and, and again, it's not directed at you. I'm pretty annoyed with EverSource, I really am. And I, I, I think we're getting the fuzzy end of the lollipop here, we really are, just for lack of better words. This is unacceptable, we are having issues, and this needs to become, this needs to be fixed pronto, because we are paying for this. And so with that being said, I will turn it over first to my colleagues. And I see that, by the way, Councilor Whitfield has joined us, a welcome, Councilor Whitfield. And I see that we also have Mr. Ed Collins, who also joined us, a welcome, Mr. Collins, thank you for joining us. Any counselors has any question? I see, if you allow me, Councilor Walsh, followed by Councilor Santinello. That's all, Walsh.
Oh, thank you, of course, I'm interested in all the issues with EverSource, but I wanna talk about Amy, because every time I have called Amy, "Hi, Amy, how you doing?", she has responded.
Nice to see you.
Good, good to see you. She has responded to any constituent concern that I have had, and recently helped me with a very sticky issue on Long Hill Street, to resolve an issue that people had for a couple of years. So I think we can have a lot of confidence in Amy, and whatsoever she's doing when we reach out to her. But of course, I am concerned about the issues before us, but Amy is a good person to go to.
Thank you, Councilor Walsh. Councilor Santinello?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Amy, how do you, how do you determine, are, are all the lumens on those lights the same? And how did you determine that? Did you go to a consultant and figure it out each neighborhood, what they need for quality lighting? Maybe it's too strong, maybe it's not strong enough, how was that arrived at? And how did we, how did we also determine the foot candle power of the decorative lights that we have not only in, at the, at the X, but also downtown and now Court Square? That, that has those decorative lights too. So what consultant did we go to to get a study done on the power, the foot, foot candle power of those?
So I'll do my best at this one, because I wasn't in this position when we started that LED program. But from what I understand, I think we worked closely with the city, and maybe Chris has some input on this, on determining some of that, but I know that there, there would have been some engineering involved with, like, the size of light that would be appropriate.
And from the, from the city's perspective, when we switched over to the LEDs, we met with EverSource, went through their different types of lighting and different types of fixtures, and we agreed upon, and I'm not even gonna guess at what the, what the level is of it, but the LED lights are significantly brighter in the neighborhoods, which was the request all the way along, was to get better lighting in the neighborhoods. And of all the lights that have been installed in the city, the LED ones, I've received one complaint from a resident, and it was just because the light happened, they happened to have a house that was right next to the street, very close, and they were complaining about the light level, which I think was shielded, but have not received any complaints about the lighting level either being too high or too little on the ones that have been replaced.
Okay, how about the decorative ones, Chris?
The decorative ones, I've been involved in decorative ones throughout the city. My warning to everybody who always recommends the decorative lights is that they do not produce the needed light from a safety perspective on roadways. And in all cases, it was like, we don't care, we want them installed throughout the city, and whether it was neighborhood groups downtown that did it. I was involved in two separate projects on Main Street, where we had, we installed the decorative lights, then had to come back and install spotlights in order to make it brighter. All of the lights on Main Street that were installed did not produce enough light, so we have installed additional lights on every light in the downtown area from basically, I, I, I think we went farther than the arch, but all the way up through the south end, up to Walnut and Mill Street, because they do not produce enough light. They are not made for a four-lane roadway like a Sumner Avenue, Parker Street, or anything like that. They do not produce that amount, that, that level of lighting that is needed for a roadway. So that is, that's one of the reasons that, I'm sorry, Brian.
No, no, go ahead.
And, and that's why when we have been replacing, and just for everybody's knowledge, the lights that were on Long Hill, Sumner Avenue, some Belmont Dickinson, Forest Park Ave, were installed in about the year 2000 or so, those lights do not exist in any way, shape, or form anymore. So we had been directing EverSource that when those were getting knocked down or damaged to replace them with black stainless steel LEDs, which is what we have been installing for new poles around the city on any projects that we've done, unless we are in a neighborhood where it's above ground and it's on an existing wooden pole. But the decorative light levels that are produced are really meant for a pedestrian scale, not for a roadway scale, and do not produce the light levels, in my opinion, for a roadway system. So a lot of those that we've been replacing over the years, we've been going with the brighter LEDs, especially on Sumner Avenue, where the lights just do not exist anymore that can be replaced.
Now, decorative lights, Chris, you said that you put spotlights
Yes.
on those?
Yes.
And who's, now who paid for that, or who paid for that?
I did. We had to buy them, and in some cases, EverSource assisted us putting them in, but in a number of cases, we had to have manpower or pay a contractor to put them in. And I wanna say we probably did a hundred and fifty, close to two hundred of them along there, that were probably, you know, I'm not even gonna guess at the cost, I don't remember, but we went out, went through EverSource to get the correct light. We bought them from a third party, and in some cases, EverSource assisted us where they could, because in some cases, they had to be hardwired, but most of those lights that are out there, especially on Main Street, have plugs. So it was, you know, putting them on, putting the bracket on, and then plugging them in, which, you know, gives us a better light level, especially on the sidewalks. But it's an added expense, we also have, we had to pay for them, and we now pay for all the power associated with those lights as well.
How about Court Square? We've invested six million dollars in Court Square, and does that have enough foot candle power?
Yeah, those are all, all new LEDs that were put in. Some of them being in the park are pedestrian scales, similar, somewhat similar to what was out there before. And then there's a whole group of them that are, excuse me, I'm, I'm gonna say a little more modern-looking in some spots, but everything there is LED to be able to illuminate that space for the different things that we have there. And those are all, I, I think ninety-nine percent of them are all working at this point.
Thank you.
All right, I believe, anybody else, any counselor has a question?
This is often for Chris, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, has...
I think he's getting water, Councilor Whitfield.
Getting water.
No problem. Has cities, EverSource bills spiked also?
No, we haven't negotiated, if you're talking about city streetlights, we basically pay a flat fee to them, price per, price per location, and then it's multiplied by the number of locations in the city. It's a set rate that includes, Amy, kick me under the table when I go off here. We pay for the, for the energy that's used, we, there's a maintenance fee, and there's one other cost that's in there, but basically, it's a flat rate that we get charged per month, per year to the city, and that is set based upon their rate for that specific light. So if you have it as a homeowner, call me, which happens a lot, and say, "I want a light in the street." "I don't have one, there's not one near me, I want it." I fill out paperwork with EverSource, they put the light in, I get the sheet, and it says to me, "You will be billed X amount of dollars every month for this light, for this type of light moving forward." And that includes the, I think, maintenance and service as well as the, the light itself. So that, that kind of is a, a small step, it's in, the electricity is in my budget. It gets swept day one of the, of the fiscal year. I don't see the bills, but basically, we just play a fat, flat rate for the specific type, type of fixture.
The other question I have, did we come up with a solution for the Forest Park lights that are out in this meeting?
The list that I had of lights out, I know that I've provided to Amy, and we're going back a number of weeks now. Most of them that I've seen have been fixed, have been repaired. However, there are a number of the old However, there are a number of the old. Fixtures, the old style lights that were put out there in the early top 2000s. That cannot be fixed, cannot be uh, maintained or anything. So when we've been able to, and the other problem that we have is that we have to match up. Uh, bolt patterns with foundations with the type of light. So what we've been doing on Sumner Avenue is when one of those historic or decorative lights goes out. Uh, they've been getting replaced with, um. The uh, state black stainless steel LEDs Cobra head style lights. Which prompted a letter from, I'm just pointing to it here at my desk, from the Neighborhood Association. Uh, who wasn't happy with uh, those types of lights going in. The issue is, is that if we do. Go to a new, I'm going to use the word new style of decorative light. The city has to pay for one hundred percent of the upcharge of the light. Uh, excuse me, the light type. So if there is a, a, uh, I'm just going to say a black LED. Stainless steel pole that's going in and just for ha ha's, say that's a thousand dollars. If I want to put a decorative light in, that decorative light might be $10,000. The city has to pay the $9,000 difference. Because in putting in a new light. When I was doing roadway projects, the North End, uh, it was done on Walnut Street before I started and a few others. On the North End in Springfield, the city paid over a hundred thousand dollars for the lights to go in. Cause we have to pay the difference for the, for the light, uh. Uh, to go in, because we're basically buying that, uh, at that point. And we are also paying a higher maintenance charge simply because of the style of light that is in there. So that rate was slightly higher. Uh, than, than the average light that we have as our regular, uh, you know, high pressure sodium Cobra headlight in the city.
Well, we were at um, the Spirit of Springfield breakfast this morning and they were talking about a grant for $400,000 that. Tim Shan's department wrote um, to get those decorative lights or those holiday lights from the North End to the South End. And I don't know if there's like any grant programs that um, will fund decorative lights that the neighborhood is looking for. Is, if that's something that you can um, ask Tim Shan or, or maybe look into. Um, I know the maintenance cost, um, how, how long do those lights usually last in the decorative?
Well, the, the, the problem that we've run in with the decorative is more so vendors. Uh, supply side of, you know, the, replacing a bulb, replacing brackets, not to speak for. Amy and her crews. That's pretty standard maintenance that can be done as long as the materials are available. A lot of the lights that we have now, the materials are not available. And when they are available, nobody is keeping them in stock, so they're manufacturing them. And in the letter, uh, that I, I had mentioned before with regard to Forest Park. The response that I had put together. Uh, we were talking about over 400 days. To be able to get the uh, replacement poles and replacement brackets. For the uh, for the decorative poles. Uh, hence the reason we said, you know, rather than waiting a year for, to put a pole back in. We need, you know, we need to get these up real quick. The other issue that we are facing in Forest Park on a handful of locations where. Lights have been severely damaged to a, a vehicle accident. That we have to wait until the spring, EverSource has to wait until the spring. Uh, to reset those foundations. Uh, because we really can't do that during the winter and I know there's a bunch of, uh, I'm going to say two or three of them that are up by like. Santander Benson's bagels that I know need to be, need to be replaced there as well, but the uh, the. The, the issue that we've been having now is just. Uh, nobody wants to supply these things and if they're supplying them, it's going to take forever to get maintenance or excuse me, just to get replacement parts, excuse me.
Right, um, yeah, uh, uh, before I turn that over to Deb, um, anything else, Councilor Whitfield?
Um, no, I'm just trying to look for solutions for um, the citizen, the neighborhood council and. Uh, maybe we could talk more about like grants or other light fixtures that would be a little bit less expensive.
And, and just, just as, I'm sorry, Councilor Whitfield, I'm sorry.
Uh, if you could wrap it up in thirty seconds, I want to give it to the floor, because I do have one quick question for you, Chris, but go ahead.
The, the one thing that I wanted to add, I know that there was an issue, like a discussion earlier this year about the lights on the Memorial Bridge. Uh, when the Memorial Bridge was done over in the mid nineties. Uh, the lights that were there were manufactured piece by piece by piece by piece. They don't exist anymore, so hence the lights that are there are completely rusted out. So now Mass DOT is trying to find a solution. Excuse me, to be able to replace those lights. With something of a period because it is a historic bridge. And at the same time, when they, this is a kind of a stupid thing, but when they built the bridge, they built the foundation as part of the sidewalk. So in order to fix that stuff, they got to kind of get the, you know, deal with the sidewalk issues as well. They're looking at those, I think it's thirty lights, maybe a little bit less, twenty-eight. Uh, and they're looking at a million and a half dollars to do those lights, so. Uh, you know, these, these lights, especially the uh, uh, cast iron. Uh, in, in downtown Springfield, I call them chess pieces, they are. Uh, much more smaller like on Worthington and Bridge. Those are actually city owned and maintained. We cannot get any replacement parts for what's whatsoever for those lights. So we've kind of been jury rigging those together. Uh, over the years with whatever parts that we can put together. Uh, to be able to get those done and we're most likely going to come to a point where we're going to have to replace them all. With something that is non, I, I want to say non. Nonhistoric, you know, historic looking, but not necessarily historic light, but the uh. Uh, bolt patterns and things like that become a, become a huge expense, but. That's the exact same problem that they're facing on the Memorial Bridge at this point.
Uh, great, so thank you for that, uh, but before I turn it over to Deb, I have a quick question. How much are we paying, how many millions are we paying for the streetlights in Springfield, whoever source?
Oh. I'll tell you in one second. The budget number for the current fiscal year. Is 3.358 million dollars.
Okay, that's for, so 3.5 mi, 3.58 million dollars buys us fourteen thousand.
Fourteen thousand, fourteen five hundred about in the city.
Okay, uh, real quick, uh, I want to remind people, I, I, I have allowed some attitude on the discussion. But we're not here talking about today about decorative lights, we're talking about. The upkeep, the maintenance and the replacement and the lack of lights throughout the city. I have allowed for some attitude of this discussion. But again, I would like to keep the discussion focused on that. We will speak later about the decorative lights, which is a very polarizing issue. And I noticed the conversation has been going towards the decorative lights. Uh, and that it's a couple of minutes in of itself. Uh, with that being said, uh, Deb, I know you have a question, thank you, followed by Harry Seymour, I believe you.
Well. I would really like to make a comment on your statement about it takes forty months to get. Parts for decorative lights, because that issue was addressed. At the March 28th, 2023 meeting of the Maintenance and Development Committee. Where the problem of parts was discussed. And Jesse Letterman said, it's not acceptable to switch out a decorative streetlight for a Cobra. But we need a plan. And he asked for that plan two years ago and the parts issue was known two years ago. And still you're talking about the problem of obtaining parts. I don't understand.
The, the parts don't exist.
But in that meeting, uh, EverSource also said that they were, uh. Researching uh, other types of decorative lights as a plan for the downtown area. What happened with that?
We have two styles of decorative lights that we can do. And one of them mirrors what is on Main Street right now, from a visual standpoint, I call it the Shepherd's crook. That is available. Again, when we put those in, the city has to pay the difference. Of the cost of that in the existing light. There is a smaller, I'm going to use the word smaller. Uh, that if you drive on like East Columbus Avenue, there are um, uh, smaller. Uh, they might be twelve or fourteen feet, uh. Lights that are available. Both of those do not provide the light levels for my purposes from a roadway illumination standpoint. They look beautiful, but they do not provide the illumination that is needed, especially on a four lane roadway. Uh, much not even a, a two lane roadway, so. The part, the issue that we're dealing with here on all the decorative, the parts do not exist anymore. The vendors do not make the parts, they're not available for purchase. Uh, you can buy stuff, but the only stuff that's really out there. And I deal with companies like Tanko and others around the world, you're dealing with pedestrian scale lights. Allah would go in, um, uh, Court Square. Uh, roadway or parking lots and things like that. So the bottom line to us is the lights for replacement. On the decorative just do not exist anymore. So whenever Source I know puts in an order for a replacement where they do exist. They're being manufactured to order. Uh, which, you know, I know we had a light down on State Street in front of the library. Uh, you know, it's that, that light to get replaced is going to take eight, ten, twelve months to get a replacement. Because that's what the manufacturing time on those is. Uh, and so I've been saying, I've been saying along that we should just get rid of those. When they get damaged, put a light back up. So that we can at least have some illumination out there. Uh, but the complaint is, is that the, what we put up, when, when I say we between us and EverSource. You know, is not historic looking, uh, and it's like, well, but I need to get the illumination out there, I'd rather have. I'd rather have something that doesn't look great versus no lighting whatsoever.
So there is, is, so the plan is no plan, so the plan is just to replace them?
The plan, the plan that we are doing now is we are replacing. All the lights when we need to with black. Stainless steel or just stainless steel, depending upon what neighborhood we're in. With LED Cobra headlights. That is the standard. That is what is fully available right now and EverSource has stock, I'm going to say stock. That if one of those gets hit and they get knocked down, they can be replaced. You know, I hate to say within a day, but they have the materials to be able to replace it. The decorative lights that we have throughout the city, whether we're in a park or someplace else. Are just taking months and months and months to get these lights. They just don't exist and when they do exist, they're massively expensive.
So. At the X where the, it's being um, the X plan, there are a lot of streetlights. You're doing a lot of tree planting as well. It seems to me that the trees block the taller Cobra head. And yet the lower decorative light is probably a better, more appropriate. Match for our neighborhood.
The shorter lights.
Dozens and dozens of trees in the X. But the, the Cobra head lights are tall. They'll be, they'll be blocked out. I just, I just don't think it makes sense. So with the decorative lights that are in the area of the X, what will happen to them during the project? And you've had plenty of time to plan for decorative lights, that project. Has been planning for ten years.
Right, we are putting in black. Stainless steel LED Cobra heads on the X project. I cannot pay for, I cannot pay for upgrades of lights. Out of our budget, which probably would have been two hundred plus thousand dollars. So there is not money available to do that, uh, it didn't exist, I can't use any state money, I can't use chapter ninety money. We used to be able to do that, cannot do that anymore.
Where did the money come for that X project? It came from federal government, it came from a variety of different sources.
Correct. That, and, and streetlights and utilities are under the purview of the local. Uh, local jurisdiction, uh, the Mass DOT, we had to pay for. The bases and conduit as well, all the new bases and all the new conduit that's going in. Are part of the project that I got the state to pay for. But the poles, everything that goes up is either borne by the city. Or by EverSource and I would end up paying the difference, which would probably be eight to ten thou, thousand dollars, I'm guessing, per pole. If I decided to go there. And then the state would probably say no, because it's not going to provide the right level of illumination on the roadway.
Oh, with Doug, uh, with Doug, I'll let you know more than you want to hear. Go ahead, you have a follow?
Well, I, are we going to shift gears back to the other subject because I have?
Yeah, we, we have a few, I'm just, I'm allowing some luck here, but go ahead. Yeah, one more.
Hey, hey, hey folks, uh, just. This is Michael.
Uh, Michael, uh, thank you for joining, for joining us, but uh. You give me a second, we do have quite a few people want to speak, I will get to you, Michael, okay?
Sure, sure.
Debbie, do you want to wrap it up, please?
Deb, how do you feel about that answer?
Well, I just think that in ten years' time. You know, when you're talking about parts issues. Are you going to trim the trees so that the lights will be visible? I just, I just, I'm just not buying your answer.
Uh, Chris, do you want to respond or?
To tell you, we can't afford to pay $200,000 out of a budget. That doesn't exist for streetlights. Just because they're decorative and then have the state come back to me and say, you can't put them in because they're not providing the level of lighting. That is required on a roadway.
But Chris, some of these lights that you're changing are working.
But they don't provide the light level. They do not provide the light level. Uh, along the roadway that is required through. Uh, either uh, uh, ASHTO or uh, the MUTCD, which are the dockings that we have to use for lighting. On roadways, so we go back and forth with EverSource on making sure that we can hit the light levels on these roadways. And we come up with, hey, the light level at this point needs to be this height, this, this location on the roadway. Et cetera. And we come up with the plan of the layout of the lights to be able to provide that needed illumination on the roadway. Now, the issue that I also have is that, you know, we put in substandard lighting and there's an accident. We got to pay the claim. And I've had to, you know, we've had to deal with claims along the way on some of the stuff downtown because people are saying. I don't have enough light level in front of my business and it's getting broken into. Hence the reason we then had to go spend, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars putting in spotlights, as I'm calling them. Pedestrian level spotlights to be able to illuminate businesses. Uh, to make them feel safer because the lights that were installed do not provide the light, light, lighting level. Uh, that's required for these areas.
Well, this is great.
Yeah, I'm sorry, if you don't, if you don't, I'll have to go back to you, if people want to have more questions. Uh, Harry, followed by Michael.
Yeah, thank you, uh, my name's Harry Seabor and I'm the chair of the Historical Committee of the Forest Park Civic Association. So I'm really looking very carefully at his historic things, but I think that's a very complicated um, discussion. Uh, Chris, you may feel like, you know, you know all the answers and it's just a matter of, of communicating to us and maybe it is. But we would like to get into depth, more depth with that at another time. Right now, we would like to, like, finish a conversation about replacement of lights. Uh, the people who have uh, um, issues with lights that are just flickering or, or that are out in front of their houses. Uh, they have complained, maybe they're not sending their complaints into you, they're complaining to the Forest Park Civic Association. And, and we need to communicate back to them. And what I would like to know, uh, given what uh, Amy said earlier of uh, you know, thirty days. Can we tell people that um, if we, if you, if you put your uh, um. Uh, uh, your, your, your desire into um, the, the, the government, I guess it's through three one one. If you, if you put your desire. If you, if you put your desire in and, and complain about the issue with, with a light at your house, that it will be, be repaired within thirty days. Can we say that?
Good question.
Chris?
Amy?
Oh, it's, it's Amy or Chris?
Yeah, so, um, I guess I can sort of jump in on that. So you know, our goal is thirty days, that's what we wanna meet. And so every issue with a light, if it's out, if it's flickering, if it's dim, there, you know, there could be several different, um, checklist that we have to go through. So we do some engineering to figure out, is it a feed that's going to the light that needs to be replaced or fixed? If that's the case and it's coming from underground, right now, we can't really get to the civil work because as Chris indicated, the ground's frozen. We don't, um, we can't, we don't do work in the winter um, to have to, to be able to fix that. So those have, those issues, if it is an underground feed that we need to do some civil work, which is digging and, and resetting that kind of stuff. We have to wait until the spring to get to that. So in the case of that, it could take a little longer because we're held up by, you know, just the the situation of the weather and the season. If it's, you know, in the spring, summer, fall, we can get to those on a more average time, timeframe. So we've been able to trim that response down to third, about thirty days to get to the lights and you know, it could be a feed, it could be the fixture itself, it could be the head that needs to replace. There's a number of, um, uh, items that could create like an issue with a streetlight. And so we have to identify that and then, and then work through it.
A- Amy, I can certainly appreciate the complexity. And I'm not really asking you to nail down every possible thing that could happen with a, with a streetlight. All I'm asking is, what do we communicate back to our membership when they say, I've reported a streetlight and it's been out for six months? It seems as though communication and transparency are really, really important. Um, and if we, if we could say something, and this is what I'm looking for, if we could say something like, um, uh, we will expect it to be repaired within thirty days. If it's not, we will give you the reason why. Is, can we say?
Eric, Eric, I would, I would add on to that. If, if it becomes an extended period of time and you're dealing with it at the neighborhood group level, get it to me. Uh, because I have those one-on-one conversations with Amy. Because one of the things that I wanted to mention, and this is kind of a little bit of wonkiness in their system. If you as a resident go into the ever source system and say the light in front of your house is out, a technician probably will be out there within a few days to, to, to look at it. Uh, and I say a few days, maybe it's a week. And the technician looks at it and finds out that it's an underground problem. It may get reported back to you that the report you put in has been closed. Uh, so you as a resident go, oh, it's been fixed. No, it's not. And really what it's done, it's been passed to a different group for a different work order. So what I always say to people is that if you've run into a problem where something is an extended period of time, get it to me. Be, and, and not to say that, you know, I just, what I really don't want is nine thousand people calling Amy. But she'll be able to figure out that specific location and say, hey, I need to get a crew, we need to relay a line. And where a problem was a few years ago was actually, I think Churchill Street. Uh, it was like two or three lights on Churchill and one on Sumner that were on a circuit that they couldn't get fixed and it took like six months. But every time a person put it in as a, hey, my street light's out, it would come back and say, it's closed. But there was a background to it. So anytime you see something out for a long period of time, get it to me. I communicate with Amy. I usually then get the story back of what it is. And if it's a bigger scale thing, uh, rather than just say, hey, it's thirty days. Uh, but if it takes longer, I always say to people, get it to me and I'm happy to follow up with her directly.
Thank you.
Okay, but, but we, we will need to know when that occasion has occurred. So if an inspector comes out and, and examines the situation and says, oh, this is really gonna be a problem for, for quite a while.
Right.
We, we don't get any communication about that, uh, un- unless there's some mechanism somewhere to call, to know to get in touch with you. And I, I really just want to be clear to our constituents, uh, um, what they should expect and, and, and that there's communication in the process.
Yeah.
Uh, with that, uh, thank you, uh, Harry for that. So we're gonna go, Michael, uh, believe you had a question followed by there. Michael, you see on the line, we don't, sir?
Yeah, thanks. Um, I just had a quick question, um, in, in the concept of how the decorative isn't sufficient for roadway lighting. Um, a quick search of the internet indicates that manufacturers make that for that, that application, but the bigger question is, is how do communities like Pittsfield or Southwick or Agawam or Amherst or Westfield or Chicopee use that type of lighting for their primary roadway lighting? If it's not sufficient?
Chris, Amy?
So, I know the city-
Go ahead, I'll let you go first, Amy.
Yeah, so in, um, so I know the city of Springfield owns their own streetlights. So they're actually, they own all the street lights and they maintain them. Um, so I can't speak to Springfield or, uh, Pittsfield. And I believe some of the other communities you listed also own some of their streetlights in that case as well. And so they, uh, I wouldn't be able to really answer how they're able to do that.
Okay, so, so that may be true, but they are using that style light for that purpose, which we're told here can't be.
Well, from a, from a large roadway perspective, no. And that's why even, even putting them downtown, I was expecting a lot of other ambient light reflection off the buildings, storefronts, et cetera. And it just, it, it doesn't work with those style of lights, uh, as far as I'm concerned. Does that mean people are putting them in? Yeah, they probably are. Uh, I don't know, you know, where, where they're, you know, they're, if they're buying them directly from a, uh, uh, a different supplier, but I know the suppliers that I've been dealing with, you know, you're basically dealing with a, I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna guess, what are those, uh, twenty-eight or thirty-two foot poles, Amy? The, the, Ellie, the, uh, Cobra heads, I think they're twenty-eight or and the ones downtown, I wanna say are sixteen to eighteen feet. So you're dealing with a different level, not as much direct down illumination, much more side to side. Uh, and the life, I know the lifespan of those on Main Street are not great. Um, uh, those get replaced a lot. Those are the ones on Main Street I know are the ones that Amy gets mad at me about because we're constantly reporting those out.
What, what causes the outage?
Uh, I, I think primarily in downtown, it's bad electrical service, um, that's down there, uh. Everything that's in Main Street down there, you're dealing with stuff that is hundreds of years old in some cases. And I know new, new, uh, conduit systems were put in uh, when Main Street was redone in twenty-ten. Uh, all the stuff that we've been doing lately on construction projects allows ever sorts to isolate individual lights uh, versus before when they were in series with each other. So if uh, uh, for those of you who were old enough, there was a period of time that the city wanted to save money to shut off streetlights. Uh, and it was a difficult proposition because the system really wasn't set up that way. But there were periods of time that there were neighborhoods that went dark, um, I don't know, early two thousands, something like that, when the control board first came in uh, with that. But, um, this allows them to be able to do it. But, yeah, uh, the, the, um, I know we're constantly having to work with Amy and her crews, uh, especially down on the Main Street side, um, with just the older systems that are out there. And the stuff that is below ground on Main Street is just mind boggling in a lot of cases.
Sure, sure, that would make sense. So it's not the lights fault, it's actually the infrastructure of the-
Or the infrastructure issue down there, because very rarely-
So it doesn't matter, so it doesn't matter what type of light you put in, you would have the same result. Whether it was decorative or a Cobra head, you would still have the same result.
Possibly, yes, possibly, yes.
If it's the wiring and the infrastructure, then the answer has to be yes, doesn't it?
Yeah, well, and when you're going with, when we've been putting in the new LED lights, we've been doing new wiring. When we've been, like, if we did Main Street over today, we would put in all, we would go with ever source to put in all the wiring down there to support them. A lot of lighting that was done on Main Street was basically just taking a light out and putting a new light in. There wasn't a lot of new, uh, uh, a lot of new wiring done.
But whatever happens on Main Street, new wiring would have to be done, correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So the type of light isn't, isn't affected by that, okay?
Not necessarily.
Thank you, Michael. I'm gonna do a quick time check. The, the time is down twelve fifty-five. This is quite a lovely discussion. Uh, we're probably gonna go, go over a few minutes, uh, if you guys don't mind. I still have uh, some people that wanna speak. Deb, I see you. Council Allen, did you have something? Did you wanna share?
I just wanted to ask Chris about that project that's going on behind City Hall. Isn't that, isn't that the infrastructure for downtown? You know, when you walk out the back door of the hall, there's a construction project that's been going on.
Yes.
Few weeks.
There is downtown, there is at least two, uh, projects going on. As an example, um, one of the big projects that's going on, obviously, there's a new, um, uh, civic center garage. The electrical systems in downtown uh, did not provide enough power for that facility. Downtown has issues with overall power. So part of that project was inside of Bruce Landon Way. Correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, is it eighteen by twenty-five feet?
I'm not sure the dimensions, but I know that it's a-
It's a very, very large, below-ground uh, electrical system that is being put in uh, in order to be able to support, uh, the facility. Ever Source is having to do massive upgrades as well to be able to support the Gemini project as well. And behind, uh, City Hall was kind of twofold. The structure itself for that, uh, um, vault was, was failing. So the structure needed to be replaced. And at the same time, all of the components in there needed to be replaced as well to be able to provide the needed electric service to that downtown area. We've done the exact same thing. It was done in front of Court Square. That system was redone, that vault system was redone. So in, in general, there's, there's an issue with overall power that we've had to deal with in the downtown area whenever there's a specific project coming up. Uh, that we've had to kind of work around for, um, uh, transformers and, and backup power, et cetera. Uh, for that, but one of the problems that we were running into on that, on the civic center garage, there wasn't enough power to supply because these new facilities now have, that facility's supposed to have a restaurant, it's got the garage itself, all the EV chargers. So you're talking about much, much more electrical, uh, pull that was needed uh, down there. But, uh, I know ever source has probably three or four of those around the city. And I kinda noticed today that they were starting to clean up the stuff behind City Hall when I was down there this morning. So it looks like that's hopefully getting done, because that's taken quite a while.
Thank you, Chris. I do want to have, uh, if, Amy, uh, I want all the people to be, hope, uh, leaving to speak. Uh, can you wrap it up in like thirty seconds, Amy? If you will have a follow-up comment?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna add to Chris's with the, the upgrades in the downtown, but I don't have to, I was just gonna, the, the Gemini, we do have a lot of reconductoring and circuit upgrades that we're doing to support some of those projects. The Gemini project was a large, um, uh, reconductoring and circuit upgrade to support that project, which I know is really important for the city. And that, um, ever source invested seven million dollars of its own money to, to upgrade that, to make sure that those house, that housing development had the significant, uh, sufficient power to go because all, all heat.
Thank you.
If you have any questions about that, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Amy. Uh, and again, uh, we-
We might have to have another meeting.
We will have another meeting. Uh, actually, we will have a few other meetings, plural. Uh, but right now, I'll ask you for your patience. This is a important issue. We're definitely over the hour. Uh, but I don't mind hanging out for a few more minutes. I do believe, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Collins, were you trying to get, were you trying to speak, sir? I think I saw you with your hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I actually, um, don't have anything to add or uh, any concerns about the decorative stuff. I wanna get back to the issue about, um, the number of lights that are out, how long it takes to, uh, you know, to get around to doing something with it. And, you know, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, Mr. Chairman, you described the, the, uh, process that, uh, uh, was under the, under Northeast Utilities, Western Mass Electric that was done away with before. It didn't happen on ever source's watch, uh. But back, back, uh, when it was still Northeast Utilities, they had a dedicated streetlight department crew uh, that consisted of seven people working in the field and, and, uh, two, uh, in the, uh, supervisors that didn't do physical work that were, that were in the office. And what you were describing was a, 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 a process called group replacing. And what they used to do, uh, they had, as you started at the beginning of the meeting to talk about, they know roughly about how long, uh, eh, in those days, they were either mercury vapor, uh, lamps or high-pressure sodium. They knew right about how long they were gonna last. And they would have six people in the field all the time in, in teams of two. And they would go through the entire system and get back all the way around to the beginning again, right around the time that you might, uh, expect lights to start to fail. And what they would do is they would just go from one pole to the next pole. They would go up, they would change the bulb, whether it was working or not. They would wash the glass globe that covers it. They would test the photocell by covering it up to make it think it was dark and see if the light came on and move on to the next one. And they were doing that, um, all around the clock. Um, they weren't all in Springfield, as was mentioned earlier, the Springfield area consisted of Springfield, West Springfield, Agawam, Southwick, Long Meadow and Ludlow. Um, but if you do a little simple math, um, seven people in the field, uh, at, at, uh, uh, an average working straight time hour, working, uh, year of two thousand eighty hours meant you had, uh, fourteen thousand five hundred worker hours per year uh, being committed to just maintaining and keeping up with uh, streetlight problems, whether, whatever they were, whether they're, uh, physical problems or simply burnt-out light bulbs. They also, you know, when people called in, uh, they also went out and, and handled things that came up, uh, in the interim. But what I would be very interested in, in knowing, and I would think the city council would want to have some uh, idea about this as well. Whatever is happening now with contractors, how do, how do the number of worker hours compare to what used to be done? I know it was a long time ago, but just because it was a long time ago, uh, doesn't mean it wasn't a better way of doing things. And I'd be very surprised to find out that when the change was made from, uh, just, uh, relying primarily upon a customer to call in with a complaint about a streetlight, to doing it the way they used to do it, uh, I don't think they cut the rate any, uh, when, 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 uh, when they made that change. But the city is not, was not getting the kind of service, uh, to maintain and keep uh, streetlights on to the highest degree possible that they used to get. And that's just a simple fact. Um, there was also a comment, a, a, a moment ago from Amy, I think, about, um, the city owning the lights. I think you were talking just about the decorative lights, because I don't believe that uh, the, the general street lighting is owned by the city. It's owned by, uh, ever source. And there is a, a provision in the nineteen ninety-eight Electric Industry Restructuring Law in Massachusetts. That gives a city or town the right to take over the streetlights. They have to buy them at fair market value. And it hasn't been used a a great deal, but I know. Several cities did it. Fall River did it. And the reason for doing it is perhaps not as. Is is diminishing a little bit with 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 going to. The the new lighting because the. LED lights don't draw as much electricity to run as as the lights that they're replacing. But the reason why some cities. Opted to take over the streetlights, to buy them. And own them and maintain them themselves with their own city employees. Was that just last Springfield is just now getting into several cities have. Hired load aggregators to go out and purchase electricity, which can then be sold. Directly to the residents. Presumably at least at a at a at a more reasonable price. Than what might be available for the default. System that the utilities are required to buy on behalf of people who don't choose their own supplier. And in order to get a little bit of a better price and in. For these aggregators to buy this bulk power. It helps to have the streetlight load. The the power being used to power the streetlights. Because it helps smooth out the load curve. If if you're going out trying to buy power from the power suppliers. And you have a big, high demand during the day, very little overnight. It's gonna cost you more per unit, per kilowatt or megawatt hour. Of electricity to buy than if your load curve is smoothed out somewhat. By the fact that you're also. Using more at night and you're gonna have less, you know. Change between the amount in the day and the amount at night. As I say, that's not as. Important perhaps. As we go, as we transition to. LED lights because LED lights don't draw the same amount of electricity that a. That a. A high-pressure sodium or or mercury vapor light does. But the city councillors and the city itself ought to be aware. Probably nobody's thought about this in a long time, that if you choose to do it. The utility does not have to be a willing seller. To to. For you to decide you wanna own those lights. You have to pay fair market value. There probably could be a dispute about what that is, but. There's a way to settle that too, so I really can't stay too much longer. I have an eye doctor's appointment coming up, but. I really would like to know.
Go ahead, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Collins.
I I was just gonna come back to what I said right at the beginning, that it would be really interesting to know. How the number of hours the contractors are putting in. Compared to what used to be done when you had seven people working in the field. Year-round maintaining streetlights.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. I did, I'm gonna do a quick time, time check. It's one thirteen. We are definitely over our people kind of jumping out the door. But to 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 get out of here. We could be here another three hours, okay? I I want to have an introduction in the meeting. I wanted people to speak. I have allowed a lot of latitude on the discussion today because it's a very important issue. I am going to say before we wrap up, I'm going to, in a second, let Deb have the last question here. But Chris, Amy. I'm gonna go back to my original statement. I have to respectfully push back. I think what we're doing is not working. Okay, and I know you guys are trying your best. Chris, I know you definitely try your best. Amy, you come you come highly. A reference by Council of Walsh, which does not escape me. However, I think what we're doing is not working and we need to look at this. Again, the main purpose today was to talk about the replacements of the lights, the upkeep, the maintenance. So what I would like to ask you, Chris. Initially, I was gonna say monthly, but I'm gonna say quarterly. I feel like we have sort of lost track of this as a city council, and that falls on us. This is definitely in our way. This is a problem. I will also push back in saying that there's more than sixty-eight streetlights out there that are out throughout the city. I'm not buying that, no. With that being said, Chris, I would like you, please, if you could be a scalding gentleman. To give the city council a quarterly report. On the maintenance and the upkeep of the lights. How many lights have been replaced? How many lights have been repaired? And to what Mr. Collins just suggested, the amount of hours being dedicated by the contractors. To Springfield based. Servicing of those lights. I have to say that we are paying, as you say, Chris, three point five million dollars, excuse me, three point five eight million dollars. As I said before, I want the service to be in Springfield. I I really have a hard time every time. We have to share with everybody else because we get the short end of the lollipop. So that we will speak, by the way, we will have another meeting on one decorative lights. And we're gonna have a follow-up meeting about this at a later time. But Chris, that's what I'm asking, if you could do that for us, please. I will ask you, encourage you, I have an expectation, Chris, to have the first report by March tenth. I think you could, I have enough confidence in you, sir, that you could produce that to the city council. So we can start a rough idea and then moving forward quarterly. Because I think just like the revenue with the city finances, this is something that the city council is to be kept aware. Is that, is that good, Chris? A pitch? You have to give me a rebuttal.
I'll coordinate with Ever Source on that to get that info. I talk to Amy and their crews all the time, so the data is available.
Thank you, Chris. And so I will leave the. Can you do it in a minute or less?
I have a very quick question. So Amy, I reported some streetlights out on Piney Woods about the end of the summer. So it's probably five months ago. I did. I talked with a representative at Ever Source, but I didn't hear back on it. So more recently, in the beginning of February, I called three-one-one. And when my husband and I spoke to three-one-one, they said they don't handle calls related to. Streetlights out, but he took our information. And when Harry and I, we had a Forest Park, our historical committee meeting, and we were talking about streetlights. And one of the members said, is information about how to report a streetlight out in the Good Neighbor Handbook? And I thought, well, it was in the past. But I looked at the current Good Neighbor Handbook and it said, refer to pages eighteen and nineteen. I did. There's no information. So if three-one-one isn't. Whoever we spoke to said, we don't take calls about streetlights. It's not in the Good Neighbor Handbook about how to report it. How do we report streetlights out?
I'll answer that because three-one-one, when they get those, are supposed to forward them to me.
I hope you did.
Well, I I, we get some from three-one-one, but all those, all those get forwarded to me because as a resident. For example, if there's eight streetlights out somewhere, a resident has to put them in one at a time, which is a pain. We have the ability to bypass that system and do them in bulk with the people that we deal with. And especially, you know, I use Piney Woods as an example. I'm sure Amy will go back and look at her system. And find out when the call came in, if there's an issue, yada, yada, yada on that, so. Three-one-one is supposed to be forwarding that to me. I get a lot of requests for new streetlights. Through three-one-one, so if there's a light out, yes, they usually should say to you, you can do it yourself. Or they can just write a ticket and forward it to three-one-one, or excuse me, to the DPW. And we follow up on it.
I hope you do. Lights have been out for five months. It's very dark and slippery.
All right, I thank you, everybody, for to meet this lively discussion. As I said before, we're gonna have follow-up meetings on the decorative lights, which is gonna be a subject in and of itself. And also, we're gonna have follow-up meetings regarding the the maintenance and the upkeep of the streetlights in the city of Springfield. Amy, I thank you for your attendance. Chris, like always, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, you can get my information from Chris to forward, to communicate with me, okay?
And councillor, I don't know if you have access to the chat for this meeting, but what I put in there is the link. Or whoever else is is on the meeting. I can share it later too.
I just have a quick request. I know ever, ever source, I know Focus Springfield is going to be editing your video. Ever Source, if you could please, excuse me. Focus Springfield, if you could please put up this link. That Amy put in here, eversource.com slash content slash, what is it?
Can't see it.
Can't see it, the whole thing.
Yeah, slash content slash residential slash services slash streetlight dash request. Honestly, if you just type in Google, street, ever-source, streetlight repair. You'll find the website, but it's where you can sell service and you can report your streetlight through there. And if you have the, if you have the address of the light on Piney Wood. If it's still out, I'm happy to look into that for you because. I think the oldest, I mean, the oldest one in our systems are, you know. We have a couple that go back to November, but like I said, those ones involve like the underground stuff, so I'm happy to look into.
All right, thank you so much.
The pole number is B eleven.
With that being said, thank you, everybody. Thank you for the love of this discussion.